United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just have one thing here tonight, and that's to call on Chuck Ripley, the Chair of the Winona Human Rights Commission, who'd like to make a presentation of the John Latch Award.
Thank you. I also wanted to introduce our Vice Chair Jacob Ripley, who's here tonight as well. It's my privilege to present the 2016 John Latch Award to the Winona Dakota Unity Alliance for their profound contributions to human rights in Winona. I want to thank Mary Farrell for making this nomination, and this award is extended to all past and present who have made the Great Dakota Gathering a sustained reality. At the risk of leaving anyone out, I want to mention Ernie and Leonard Wabashaw, Rod and Shirley Steiner, all the Dakota elders, tribal council members, chiefs, veterans, Lyle Rustad, Jerry Miller, Eric Sorensen, John Borman, other city officials, Bill and Joan McNeil, all past and current board members and presidents of the alliance, including current President Aaron Camacho, and so many others. The WDUAs' commitment to indigenous nations, historical truth-telling, and the building of understanding and friendship among all people stands as a model, especially at this moment. Speaking on behalf of all the citizens of Winona, I want to say how grateful we are for what the alliance brings to our community. Let us always stay true to the covenant of friendship between the city of Winona and the Dakota nations, and commit to the deepening of our bonds.
Thank you, Chuck, and the Vice President of the Human Rights Commission, and to our community. It really belongs to all of us because you all sustain what we do throughout the year and since, sorry, the beginning of the creation of this unity alliance. And Dakota means the people, and we are all the people, and I think that we need to understand as we accept this award that it's not only accepted with the gratitude of the participants in the Winona and greater Winona region, but all those who have participated in actions to sustain and support civil rights. Because unlike the United States, others across the world are not so lucky as ourselves to be able to voice and vocalize our needs and aspirations amongst our communities. So in my language, Yage Naganan, which means "all of my relations," and in the Dakota language, Metakuee Oyasin. Thank you.
Do you want to use this opportunity to say something about this year's Dakota Gathering?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. So we have some bookmarks available, as well as the flyer right at the entrance of this building. Our annual Great Dakota Gathering homecoming and powwow is going to be September 10 through the 11th, and we'd welcome all of you to join. We have events that start at sunrise that you are more than welcome to come to, as well as events that go all the way to dinnertime, our unity feast, both Saturday and Sunday. So please come on out. There'll be the annual events like the Talk Circle and the Education Tent that I'm sure that you all will enjoy. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. City Manager?
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Okay, roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilwoman Thurlie.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Idan.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Double.
Here.
And under the Petition's Request and Communications, item 3.1 is an appointment to the Citizens Environmental Quality Committee of Elizabeth Reach. So moved.
Second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. I did not have an application with mine. Did others have that?
I'll get that out to you.
Okay, but I can vouch for her. She's seen the application, and she's very qualified. Sounds like we're ready to vote, though. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 3.2, the Winona Health Fireworks Show, to be held on October 4th. Move or approve that request?
Second. Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Al. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 3.3 is the St. Stanislaus Street Closure Request for Sunday, September 18th. So moved.
Second. Motion by Michelle. Give it to George. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Under New Business, item 5.1 is the Logo License Agreement with Visit Winona. Move to approve that request and authorize the City Attorney Manager to sign the agreement.
Second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 3.2, excuse me, 5.2 is the Purchase of Three Transit Buses.
Move to approve the purchase of the three buses.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Michelle. Discussion?
Here, five.
Al.
I'll give you two.
All right.
Yes, I was wondering if we had looked into any hybrid or electric buses when we're looking for these to replace our old ones.
Mayor and Council, we did purchase off the state contract, and at the present time there are no manufactured buses in the smaller-sized buses that we have that are either hybrid or LP, which is what we would likely. You can do aftermarket changes, but at this point, Minda does not allow that with the state grant funds.
Okay, thank you for that. Hope we keep, let's keep looking.
Oh, yeah. Good question. Al?
When are these buses expected to be in service?
We would anticipate before the end of the year.
This year?
This calendar year.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Item 5.3 is the Renewal of the Winona State University Transit Service Agreement for the 2016-2017 Academic Year. Make a motion to approve the agreement.
Second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Discussion? Hearing none. Vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 5.4, Set a Recess Meeting to Certify the Results of the City Primary Election. A recess meeting would be held at 10:00 a.m. on Friday, August 12th. Move approval? Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 5.5 is the Veterans' Park Conduct Ordinance. I would note that a revised ordinance has been distributed this evening to the council and the public.
Okay. Well, obviously, a lot of interest in this agenda item. I just want to say that this is a public meeting but not a public hearing. As such, there will not be public comment tonight. We're not against public comment, but I don't think it would be fair to those that were told that this is not a public comment opportunity, so, you know, there's been a lot of public comment about this, certainly, and the council has all heard it, but I just want to remind the audience of that. So I guess I would like to start with our city attorney, I think, to bring us up to date on the draft ordinance that we were sent and the more revised one, the more recently revised one, and say that this really is the first opportunity that the council has had to have a conversation about this subject. It was two weeks ago when this was first brought up. This whole Pokemon craze has only been around about three weeks, and so this is all very new conversation to all of us.
Mr. Mayor and Council, yes, there's a revised ordinance in front of you tonight. The original ordinance that we drafted, based on discussion at a staff level and based on working with Councilor Craig, was patterned after the rules of conduct for Arlington National Cemetery. So in the Code of Federal Regulations, there's specific laws in place for Arlington National Cemetery, so we've patterned our ordinance based on that. We thought that that was the best approach to bring something to you. When we started to get into this process and then having discussions with Councilor Craig and then both at a staff level, too, we discovered that there is really no designation of the memorial area in Veterans Memorial Park as a memorial, as a shrine to honor veterans, and there is no, we don't have any rules or code of conduct related to that particular area. And so we, I know there's been discussion about Pokemon Go. This isn't really, that is a side issue. This is really more of a, how should that area be used, and should we have an ordinance in place to designate that area, number one, as a memorial, and, number two, have rules of conduct in place which will allow law enforcement to enforce those rules and to have an area where we've designated a small, triangle, postage stamp, really, sized area amongst all of the other public areas in the city, and setting this one small area aside for this particular purpose to honor those that have served our country and et cetera. So what we did was, we drafted the original ordinance, and then we put that in a packet, and then we have since drafted a revised ordinance, which is a, I think, a scaled-down version of that. The more revised ordinance removes some of the, some of the issues or some of the things that we've been hearing about, well, you know, does this impact free speech? Those issues, like I said, we patterned what we did after, really, directly after Arlington National Cemetery. And I can get into a long discussion about how free speech is not an unfettered or unregulated right in this country. I don't know that you need a constitutional dissertation from me about that, in particular if you're going to go with the revised version of the ordinance or some rendition of the revised version of the ordinance. So what you have before you tonight is you have a, in the first part of the ordinance, in the findings and purpose, you are basically designating this area, Veterans Memorial Park, as a memorial or shrine for our veterans. The second portion of the ordinance, you are basically establishing rules of conduct for purposes of use of that area and allowing law enforcement to enforce it. That's what we need to do, to try and, you know, it's unfortunate that we can't just have people do what they're supposed to do and be, live in a civil country and respect things and respect each other's rights and uses, but we can't, apparently, and so we need to have something in place to try and establish what the rules of use of that area will be, and if there's abuse of those uses, then allow our law enforcement to be able to enforce. Hopefully, a verbal warning will be sufficient in most cases and not have to result in citations. So like I said, in the second part of the ordinance, it lists several of the issues about, you know, not defacing monuments, more substantively...
You're talking about the revised one?
The revised one, yes. Not defacing monuments, just paraphrasing a little bit here, not having tents and hammocks and other types of structures in the memorial area, you know, otherwise respecting the memorial area, et cetera. So I don't know if everybody's had a chance to review that. I can certainly go into more detail if you would like, or if you want the constitutional dissertation, because I see a lot of excited faces about that right now.
I would like to know if the people in the audience would like to know what's in the revised ordinance before we begin, so they know what we're talking about.
I think they were given a copy of it. We all have copies of it.
Okay, okay.
Anybody need a copy of it that doesn't have one? Are there more?
I can certainly read through each element of it.
Why don't you read it?
Sure.
We have an audience at home that I'm sure doesn't have this, so I think that would be good.
If folks saw the original version...
We're going to have our own here. I'm not sure what that's going to turn up.
We got it.
If people have already seen the original version, the only change really is the area in it where we're talking about substantive comment or conduct, which is under paragraph C of the ordinance, and it basically says that no person shall, number one, deface, climb on, sit on, stand on, or otherwise damage any monuments located within the park, which is the Veterans Memorial Park, allow any dog, cat, or other pet to be within the park, use the park grounds for recreational activities, including but not limited to sports, athletics, picnics, or other individual or organized recreational activities, erect a tent, hammock, or other structure unless the use of the same is part of a military memorial service or ceremony authorized by this section, five, sleep or sunbathe in the park, six, ride a bicycle or skateboard or use roller blades within the park with the exception of the parking lot where such use is permitted, seven, deposit or throw litter on park grounds, eight, drive any motor vehicle within the park other than in the parking lot, nine, engage in any disorderly conduct within the park, ten, display or distribute commercial advertising for the purpose of soliciting business or otherwise solicit business within the park grounds, and eleven, be within the boundaries of the park between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 4:00 a.m. There are also exceptions where this, those prohibitions would not apply. There's an exception for public safety and city personnel to deal with emergencies and other work that would need to be performed by the government within the area, and then also there's an exception to those rules for those certain activities that are otherwise permitted or licensed by the city.
George, you want to ask a question?
Yeah, just, he just did it, so...
Okay, all right. Pam?
Yes, could we have clarification, please, on point number three? Use the park grounds for recreational activities, including but not limited to sports, athletics, picnics, or other individual or organized recreational activities. Does this include electronic games?
It would include potentially other electronic games. Yes, it would. That is going to be difficult to enforce, because I don't know how you would be able to tell someone was electronic gaming, but it's primarily directed at, you know, you probably shouldn't be playing frisbee golf in the middle of the memorial.
How about Pokemon?
I'd like to address that if I can. I should recognize Michelle first, if you don't mind. Michelle had her hand up.
I'm sorry. Pam, that was a question, though, right?
No, go ahead.
Okay. So my issue, I mean, I was going to wait for there to be an actual motion to discuss, but my actual issue is some of the ambiguity of the language. So for me, a picnic is I come on my lunch break and sit in the park and eat a sandwich while I'm looking at the monuments. I would prefer if we are using more specific language, like we don't want you to grill or cook in the park, but are we really saying to people that you can't enjoy a lunch break in the beautiful park while you look at the monuments? And I realize this is just a draft, which is why I bring this up. I just feel like some of the language is too restrictive or not restrictive enough in the fact that people won't understand what it is exactly they're not allowed to do. I think, I feel like so many of these are already probably ordinances somewhere, like defacing public property. I think there's probably a lot to deal with that. Not that I don't support that people should climb on them, but I feel like some of this probably is already covered other places, but in those specifically, it's confusing for people to know, can they play Pokemon, or what if they're on their phone, but they're not playing Pokemon, but they're just happen to be sitting on the park? I just, the language there for me is not specific enough. I feel like most people probably know you shouldn't play softball in that part of the, or soccer, but I think the real issue, although we're saying it's not, is Pokemon Go. So to Pam's point, we're wondering what happens to those people, although I don't think this is enforceable. And then my other part is, how do you, the sunbathing and sleeping thing, so again, it's if I'm in a tank top and shorts and I'm sitting in the park, that's technically sunbathing. What if I read a book and take a five-minute snooze on my lunch break? I'm technically sleeping in the park. I just feel like some of these are maybe not right. I just think that there's no reason to try to enforce that or have police enforce that or have community members calling the police when they see someone taking a snooze in the park. I feel like that's how we want people using the park, even Veterans Park, which is a beautiful place to be and relaxing place to be. So, and again, with the disorderly conduct, I don't know what that means. That could be something different to everyone.
Well, disorderly conduct is a state statute-defined term.
Okay, so...
So disorderly conduct is a defined term already. To your point, the reason that some of this is duplicative of other ordinances is because we felt we needed to have a list of rules of conduct, which then could be posted on a sign in that area and try to educate people that these are the rules of conduct for this area, and it would be nice if they didn't abuse them. And I don't think the police are going to be waiting for you to have your picnic lunch there.
No, but, but given recent events, what if people feel like they need to address that? There are people, not even Veterans Park, just in general, that feel like they need to go and tell people when they're doing things wrong and then become confrontational with them. I feel like some of these are setting people up to be confrontational in a place and in a way they don't need to be. I don't think we need to confront the person sitting in the grass eating her sandwich at lunchtime, because we think, I think that's a picnic, and that's prohibited there.
No, and, you know, again, these are policy issues for you as a council to deal with.
So I guess what I'm saying is...
My role in this was to bring you an ordinance. It is your role to decide what's in it, if anything.
Right. I guess what I'm saying is I don't like that. I actually don't like item three and five and nine. I mean, some of these are fine, because I know they're already ordinances we have maybe in other places. I mean, if we have to restate them, then we have to restate them for the piece of everything, but I, I just, I feel like those two in particular are, are not correct for any park, even a memorial park. I feel like that would be a place I would want to sit in comfortable clothing and eat my sandwich.
I'd like you to give your chance to speak.
I've got so much to say, and I've got to be careful, ladies and gentlemen, because I'm incredibly emotional about this. Let's cut to the chase. This is about Pokemon. If it wasn't for the game, we would not be sitting here. Veterans Park was built 25 years ago. It's been phenomenally successful all that time, and it wasn't until right on July 8th or 9th when the game came out, then all of a sudden there seemed to be an issue with two different types of people or two different activities trying to coincide on that same park. We didn't have these rules back when we wrote it 25 years ago, because none of us ever envisioned that we would have to tell somebody, please don't put a tent up or a hammock up, and et cetera, et cetera. So that's why we're here tonight. The game will probably eventually be moved. The next version, hopefully, will have another location if eventually city staff can somehow get in touch with them, which is certainly not easy, because organizations and communities across the world are attempting to do the same thing, and eventually it'll get done. But some of these activities, we found out that some people just, well, they need to be told some, some of these things, like a hammock and like a tent. That's why we're having this ordinance. So does it specifically address Pokemon? Maybe, maybe not. However, we're here tonight because of the game, so let's get that out there. And to address Councilman Iden's idea about, or suggestion about the Pokemon game, does it address that specifically? The Veterans Memorial Park Association had a meeting tonight at 4:30, and we discussed this particular ordinance and a variety of other things, and here's what we came up with in a very short meeting, because we didn't have a lot of time before the next meeting and the next meeting tonight, but we wanted to meet with a fresh meeting, so we were in agreement on what was going on tonight. And there were really only about three issues, and they were, one of which would be agreeable to a name change. I believe Councilman Thurlie may talk about something along that line that could clear up some of the confusion. They're agreeable to the name change that he may suggest this evening or at a later date. The other thing was about Pokemon itself. They voted unanimously that they would prefer the game not to be played there. They would like to prohibit it. However, that committee likes to stand with the police department and knowing full well that that is an unenforceable law if we put it out there, and we do not want to put them in a bad situation. They have got enough on their plate. They don't need to be going up to somebody and trying to figure out if, in fact, they are not playing the game or if they are playing the game. If nobody's going to admit to playing the game, they're all texting grandma or something, but the thing is, is it's not enforceable, so even though the committee voted unanimously that we would not like that game there, we don't want to put any more pressure on the police department. They have enough on their plates the way it is. I've got more to say later as we get into this, but I just wanted to, hopefully, that could clear it up. We may want to tighten that up however we want to do it, because enforcing an electronic game, enforcing football or frisbee with a dog, that's pretty simple. Enforcing an electronic game, not so much. So that one, we agreed to not put that pressure, not put it in here, and also not put that pressure on the police. So if it's somewhat ambiguous, maybe that can be tightened up. And I do believe we may just, perhaps we introduce this before we do much farther. Is that appropriate? Because we really should have something...
I know we need a motion, really should have a motion in a second to discuss it. I think that it was, it was good for us to have a little bit of conversation, especially to hear from the county, the city attorney before we did so.
And I agree, and I did want to, since Councilman Iden had that question that everyone was wondering, is it in here? We did meet and will agree that, hey, again, we would prefer it not be there, but it's unenforceable, so why put something in there that's just going to pit the police against somebody and then other people are going to be angry? The other things we can certainly discuss, if it's okay, I would like to move to introduce the, the ordinance, the new ordinance that was handed out today.
I'll second that.
Okay. Now we have a motion by Jerry and a second by George. Let's discuss.
I would like to, I would like to, number one, amend it from the, and in the area where we say Veterans Memorial Park, to read Veterans Memorial Area, because in the second, in the revision that we have, we've defined now where the area is, and the area is within a park. So I want to distinguish between the veterans area and the park in general, and I think from a set-aside activity area is far more definitive than in the general term of park. And if you look up the definitions of park versus area, it is, it is pretty clear that area is a better word than park.
Okay, we have a motion for amendment. Is there a second? I guess not. Other discussion? Al?
This has been a very interesting discussion, and I've really enjoyed folks who have contacted me about this. And yes, I do have a smartphone. My speed on video games and my smartphone is solitaire, but I understand that Pokemon Go is a very compelling game, and the gym that was set up at Veterans Park was one of many in our community. So I understand the passion for all of this. What we're trying to do here is to craft, if you will, a code of conduct, which is an ordinance form, which I think most people will be agreeable to. And given that discussion, and kind of along with the councilperson Double's thought, as I was thinking about this, that the, in most people's minds, the definition of the word park is much broader than the actual memorial itself. And so what I would propose in... And so what I would propose in our ordinance that we have before us is simply replacing the word park with just the word memorial. In other words, it's a veterans memorial. Further, in definitions, which is on part B, I would define the park very narrowly. In the ordinance that we have before us, the veterans memorial goes all the way to the band shelf. My definition would be in the narrow area of the triangular shape between Main Street and the west line of the band shelf parking lot. So where the steps that go up to the memorial start would be the east line of the veterans memorial. Very clearly defined, very easy to understand. And then the ordinance itself would then make a series of changes, which would replace Veterans Memorial Park with just the words veterans memorial, and then defining that narrow triangular piece of land, which is actually the veterans memorial itself, which to me makes a lot easier for most folks to understand. That's really all it is about. And I agree with the concept that this area has been set up, and I think that defining it like this and allowing respectful activities within that, as this ordinance does, will go a long way toward, you know, allowing us to better understand what is going on here. And I also would, this is not part of the amendment that I'm proposing, but I also would encourage administration to continue to contact Niantic to remove the particular gym from this area and disperse it to other parts of our park, which is wonderful. We have thousands of acres of parkland, and that's the appropriate place for all of that. I'm glad that people are out and about and looking for their Pokemons to do battle and get to a higher level. That's great. But that veterans memorial, to me, and I think hopefully to the majority on council here, is not something that we'd like to have those players involved with. Certainly, they can, you know, be at the memorial, and while it's still a gym, you know, we can't really stop that. But just do it with respect and decorum that the memorial deserves. And that's my amendment. I'm sorry, it's a little confusing, but that's my amendment.
Okay, so your amendment is simply to the word smith, the word park, and just delete park?
Leave it at that. And then to narrowly define that park itself, triangular park, that it now exists.
So we do have a, we have a motion by Al for the amendment and a second by Paul.
Okay. Thank you, Paul.
We have some discussion on the area that's being described here. I don't understand why we would include the parking lot.
He just excluded it.
That's what the amendment is.
He didn't, he got rid of it?
Yeah, the amendment is to exclude it. Okay, good.
Now, you know, the current ordinance includes it.
Okay, thank you.
But my amendment excludes that.
Good idea.
Other comments about the amendment? Jerry?
I'm in favor of it, and the reason that that was in there is because there's a history. When this park was built, the park is actually, the designation of the actual park area, since it was a subsection of thousands of acres of parkland, was much larger. So the area that's really been invested in is what we consider, we call it the high ground. And that has been the area that has really been the contentious area right now, that is trying to be shared by two groups at the same time, with activities that obviously have not been successful coinciding. So that is why this actually makes sense. There is a larger, as a matter of fact, there's a Purple Heart Monument that's over on the other side. But the area that has been so interesting the last three weeks has been this area, so this defines it, and I'm in agreement. As is, more importantly, as is the park association. Soon to be known by a different name, I guess.
Veterans Memorial Association. Other comments before we vote on the amendment? Here are none. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Other discussion? Jerry?
I'll either take the credit, or it certainly seems tonight, and in the last few days, I guess I'm getting the blame for a lot of this by bringing it up. Certainly not against the game itself, it's certainly just the area that it's in. And what we did here, the very first day that many of us in the city realized it, was, I'll tell a very quick story. I was driving by at lunch on my way back to work, and I noticed there was about three dozen people, and I had no idea what was going on. And they were standing rather still, looking at their phones, and I went up and talked to one gentleman, and I thought it was like a theater project from Winona State. That's what I asked him. And he told me, no, it's a game, and et cetera. And I said, you know, it's probably not the best spot for it. He said, good luck. I think that the game, or the game is designed in Japan, he told me. This was 30 seconds after I noticed the game. I asked him if he could please help me, because what I noticed, and it was not only the people, but there was a person playing catch with a dog. And I asked him, can you help me telling that gentleman that dog is not allowed here? He said, you're on your own. So I went to talk to the person. The person had an attitude with me, and I'll admit, I immediately had an attitude with the person. And the exchange did not go well. I noticed phones popping up, and both sides decided to walk away from one another. I then called the city, and then I went down to park maintenance and asked them. They had no idea. And then it just, we all started to learn a little bit from it at that point. Not against the game, I certainly wish I knew how to play it, and more importantly, I wish I invested in it. But it's many people's opinion, this may not just be the best place for it. So given that, if the spot is eventually moved, the park has an interesting history, and we won't talk about it tonight, except the city did not have a veterans park and a large group of people, or everybody wanted one, since I believe the Civil War, possibly before that. We didn't have one. That area was used, and it was an eyesore for Winona. And I'll take part of the blame for it. I was on the council back then, and we had allowed that area that was used one time a year for Veterans Day, for Memorial Day, we allowed it to be used. And it was a mud puddle full of weeds, with a really raunchy-looking flagpole down there. And this was the first Memorial Day after the first Gulf War. And that's, by the way, that's where they put all the wreaths on all the crosses for all the fallen from Winona County. On this particular Memorial Day, it had rained heavily the night before. The Boy Scouts were walking, if some of you will recall, Boy Scouts were walking through ankle-deep water. And it was the Hammerdick Brothers that approached me in their way, not so nice, kind of angry, and say, when are you guys going to finally do something about this? So we got together, and there were 13 people at the very first meeting, and we walked out of there with $1,300. And then that group then formed, was the original formation of the formerly known as the Veterans Memorial Park Association. We worked with the city. Two years later, it turned out to be one of the nicest parks it's considered in the tri-state area. Hundreds of thousands of dollars have been raised in countless volunteer hours. I tell that quick history, or not so quick history, because I want to reach out to the gamers. It is our understanding that outdoor interactive gaming is possibly the thing of the future, and it's a good idea, keep people out and doing some socializing, moving around outside. If, depending on the game, if it's ever possible to designate another really cool hot spot, another area that is as popular as Veterans Park, we're all up here very willing to work with you. If you set up a committee, and we'll make an outdoor gaming site in Winona, one of the best in the tri-state area. We will do the same thing. We will work with you to try that. I see people shaking their heads. Fine, give me a call, and I'd like to know why. And maybe what I'm saying doesn't work with the game. But we got to admit, where it is doesn't work. So, well, at least I'll admit it. And by the way, there was a lot of negative interaction that was going both ways. I certainly hope that from this point forward, we move on, we look at the future, we attempt to coexist the best we possibly can.
What's the right way for the public to comment?
I don't know, but I really, and I don't want to pick a fight with this guy in the back, but I really would like to talk to you after the meeting, because I think you've got a lot of good input. I'm guessing so, because you're smiling, and I'd be willing, as soon as the meeting will be over shortly, I'd like to talk to you. I'm serious on that, not to have an argument over who's right and who's wrong, because we're both going to think the other one is whatever, but to move forward. By the way, when we built Veterans Park, that wasn't easy. We were told, you can't do it, and it's not going to work. It was hard to get all seven votes on the council, and it's not that they were against anything, they just figured it can't be done, it's too much money, you're going to start a project you cannot finish, et cetera. Those were all good, made it, you were there, and it was good concerns, because we've had other ideas come up. But on this one, if it works for the game, we'd be willing to work with you. If it doesn't work for the game, then I guess my idea doesn't hold water.
I said at the beginning, there wasn't going to be public comment, and I'd like to ask the council not to engage the audience in conversation here, but I did hear a question, and I'll try to answer it. We are receiving lots of comments. I've had comments from Canada to, I don't know where, but we've probably had more comments on this than any other subject, at least for those of us that are new around the council. And it's all good. Phone calls, emails, in person, we welcome that, and I think that's important. And tonight, if we do pass an ordinance, and we haven't done that yet, it does require another reading and the two votes, so there's at least two weeks of opportunity here for members of the public to contact any and all of us, members of the council, who will then vote again if we do have a vote here tonight approving this. So email, letters, phone calls, all of our information is publicly posted on our City of Winona website, so we're pretty easy to get ahold of. Al?
Just a comment, too, that if this does pass, and we do introduce the ordinance, as part of the process of introducing the ordinance, perhaps it can be posted to the city's website for review and comment by our folks here tonight, and those watching and all of that. And also that we continue our efforts to remove this particular gym from veterans memorial, and that we look at, and this is something we can do perhaps at the second reading, is set a sunset, or at least a process to review this ordinance to see how it's working. So, you know, to see if we've made success with it going forward. It's really true of all of our ordinances, that we really need to look at them all, and how are they working, how are they affecting our citizens? So it's just my comment on this whole process as we go forward, assuming this will be introduced and ready for the second reading.
And that can be brought up at any time.
Yes. But I just wanted to get it out here, as long as we have a great audience here.
Ken?
Yes. I am not comfortable with even voting on this ordinance, since we haven't clarified the language, as Michelle Alexander has said. I think we'd need to sit and craft this quite a bit before we came up with these definitions, and I'm not comfortable with doing that on the spur of the moment. Point number three and point number five are triggers for me. I'd also like to talk about how we're going to let people know at the perimeter of this memorial, what the behaviors are. So, and do it in a positive way. You know, do it in a positive way, like this is a place for respect, this is a place for, you know, however, however we want to say it, and tell people what's expected and not. So it's not, it's not something hidden on the city's website, it's not something hidden away in the ordinance that people will know. So are we thinking of signs, or what are we?
Something that our city attorney mentioned early on, and he referred to a code of conduct. And I think that between those people who are invested in this whole process, that along with city staff can craft a code of conduct, which will be reflective of the decorum and the respect that this veterans memorial deserves. And then to post, you know, I'm not talking about a huge sign with, you know, 89 different rules, but something very simple, a few bullet points, I think that would get the point across, is Councilperson Iden saying. That's my response to, and I think that's good. And I think, too, for you and your definitions, that between now and the second reading, we can perhaps modify them to better clarify and satisfy perhaps yourself and Councilperson Alexander.
Michelle?
This is the kind of thing I like to have input on, on the front side of it. But I couldn't vote to approve this with three and five in there as they are. I would like three, I mean, five gone entirely, and three, I could handle some modification. I understand why we wouldn't want sports, athletics in the park. I think that's reasonable and understandable, that we don't want people playing baseball or soccer or football, or even frisbee, golf, or anything like that in that park. But I do feel like it is a nice place for people to eat lunch, to sit with their kids. I do feel like using the words individual recreational activities organized is kind of ambiguous for me. I'm not really sure what that means. Is organized for my friends getting together and going down there? I don't know. So for me, that word, it's really three that I have the bigger issue with, and five that I would just like gone entirely. Unless you can clarify for me what those things mean, I feel like a lot of people in the park are intending to get sun. So I just, I don't think there needs, that the purpose of that, it does not make sense to me.
Kerry?
In 25 years, we really haven't had too many sunbathers down there. It was on a rare occasion, and now it seems like stretching a hammock, taking a nap, doing things has become something that happens a bit too often. I agree with you, it's kind of tough, but the option would be to not have it in there, and then it's going to be worse if you don't have it in there. Our police have common sense on this particular one, so I don't know how to handle that one. Councilman Iden, the way I read number three, I assumed it was already out of there. It wasn't until you read it. It's funny, I mean, you're reading it one way, I'm reading it another. I read it, because the original one had electronic games in it. So since it was taken out, I think that we can, I mean, I think we can say now that it does not include electronic games, because the previous one specifically spelled it out, this one does not.
Okay. I think, I just think everybody needs to know the same, the same rules. But picnics is interesting, because I'd be less offended, personally, I'd be less offended by someone sitting and eating a sandwich than I would have somebody set up their hibachi grill or something. And that, those are, that's not mentioned in here, I don't think.
Right. That was earlier, too, I said cooking or grilling, why can't they eat a sandwich? Why can't they have their ice cream cone? I find that to be odd.
So if we're going to be specific, I'd favor the one over the other. Picnic is kind of a mild use of, I think, of the space.
I think we're about 98, 95% there. I'd like it to be voted on tonight. We're awful close. That tweaking of those two items, I think either can be done tonight, in the next couple of minutes, or possibly better, over the next two weeks before final adoption. We've done that many, many times, the tweaking of the final couple of words before. Is that appropriate? Or if you tweak it even a bit, does it have to be reintroduced?
No, it doesn't have to be reintroduced. You could do a motion to amend tonight in some way, shape, or form. Obviously, that's in the council's discretion to do that. Based on Counselor Thirley's amendment, I am going to have to go back and revise this anyway, so, I mean, there's going to be another version of this, which we'll try to get done relatively quickly and put out there for the public. But obviously, you won't really see it officially until the next time you meet. But, so I'll make Counselor Thirley's changes as well, and obviously, I have to have a little bit of license as the city attorney drafted to make it work properly, so I'm assuming Counselor Thirley's going to be okay with that, and the rest of you will as well. But if you have other amendments that you want to make tonight, obviously, that's your prerogative to do that. Number three, you know, I will freely admit, it wasn't the easiest thing to draft. I mean, I'm trying to come up with something that will generally work, and I agree with you, Michelle, that it's a little ambiguous. So I don't have anything against sleeping or sunbathing either, so just put that out there.
I'm going to make the first motion, then, that we remove item five entirely from the code of conduct. I think, again, to Jerry's point, probably the police know the difference between someone who's taking a five-minute cat nap and someone who's set up shop to sleep. And I think their discretion is trustworthy. The sunbathing, I just, I've yet to see someone running around in a bathing suit, and I've yet to hear one veteran complain when they have. So I'm just saying, I'm just saying that we could remove that one from the list.
Can we keep five in there and make it mandatory?
No, we can't do that either.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Michelle and a second by Paul.
Are we going to cover all of the amendment, all of the language?
I want to do them separately in case.
Feeling with the number five right now.
Okay.
So we have a motion, a second. Other discussion?
Yes.
Well, Kerry, go ahead. George has been trying to say something.
Yeah. Chief, now, when an officer, let's say, comes down, they're on a call, they use their own discretion, whether this person-
own discretion whether this person is violating any of these or if I'm just eating a hamburger on the bench, I am not violating any law. I mean, when the officer comes, they have discretion as whether that it is a major violation and not violation or just ask you stop it, you cooperate and then everybody moves on?
That's a fair statement, but it's nice to have something really specific so that we can respond to the person calling in and give them a good answer as to why this person didn't get cited or why they were allowed to continue when their definition of, say, like the word picnic may be different than what ours is. So I think it's worth looking into, you know, some of the changes in there. So taking out all the ambiguity is good.
Is it legal to sleep under a pine tree in Levy Park right now? Can you do that? I know somebody was for a while.
You can't camp there. You can, you can take a nap. Yep. To a point. If you're going to, you know, you can't erect a structure and intend on spending night, an entire night there or day.
Jerry?
The main issue of the calls I was getting was really related to the hammocks. So I think we've taken care of that issue with saying that hammocks are not allowed down there, therefore, if somebody takes a cat nap under one of those pine trees, it so be it. Or if they're doing their homework and they, I mean, we don't want to put more pressure on the police, the chief, and he was right, but the main issue was the hammock and I suppose that just moved right into sleeping. And we have had issues in other park areas and other pavilions where people have set up shop and so I think, but nonetheless, there are other ones that affect that, especially if it's an overnight situation. And that's not been the case here. And if it is, there's other laws, other ordinances to take care of it overnight.
Other comments? Are we ready to vote on this? I think we are. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye. Opposed? Kerry's?
Then I would make an amendment to item three for the use of the park grounds for recreational activities. I'm fine with it not including or limited to sports or athletics. I would get more specific than picnic and say no grilling or cooking in the park. I'm a little uncomfortable with other individual or organized recreational activities because I'm not, that's too ambiguous. I'm not sure what the police would do with that or even how that's enforceable. So at this point, unless someone has another suggestion, I would like to remove that wording and just leave it at no grilling or cooking in Veterans Memorial.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion by Michelle and a second by Jerry. Discussion?
That second line there, the or other individual or organized, that was leading right into the next three words were such as, or words were such as electronic devices. With that out, it kind of helps it a little bit. Again, the thing was, playing catch with the dog, playing catch down there, that was the type of thing that was obvious that was not the right movement.
Well, I agree with removing it as well. I think, you know, there's no point in passing an ordinance that's not enforceable.
Correct.
It's not enforceable and it, just like you said, they're talking to their, or they're just checking their email, I mean, things like that, we just, you can't enforce that, it shouldn't be enforced.
Your honor, the other concern the staff was trying to address with that language is the next step, if there's, Hacky Sack comes back and you got 50 people playing Hacky Sack down there. That was our intention to try to get at with that language.
That's a sport or athletic. Hey, I grew up in Hacky Sack era. They called it a sport.
We talked about Dungeons and Dragons or Quidditch or, you know, who knows what's going to come down the road from here. So that was the intent of that language.
We can always amend it.
Yes. If Hacky Sack comes back, I will get a medina. How's that?
Only if there's 50 people or more.
Only if there's 50 people or more.
Other discussion, George?
So what is number three going to read then?
Use the park grounds for recreational activities, including but not limited to sports, athletics, grilling or cooking.
Okay. Open fire? Open fires or charcoal or?
Well, that'd be grilling or cooking. You can't have a fire in the park.
We use open fire as a, isn't that a term that is pretty common in ordinance language?
We have a, I think we have an outdoor burning ordinance. I'm not sure what the specifics of that are right now, but I'm assuming that would apply.
You can't just grill anywhere in any park, can you? Isn't that already addressed?
I don't think it's addressed.
Well, then this one will address it in this particular small section, which is good. And then we'll see.
All right. Other comments? We'll vote on number three and the language changes. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Same sign? Passes. Further discussion on the ordinance?
Yeah, if I could say one thing, I read a lot of the comments that came with the petition and there were some pretty interesting ones, but I did catch quite a few of the gamers and I hope that's not a bad name that you, but that's what I'm, okay, talking to, that they were saying that they agreed, not a lot, but there was a number of them that said, they agreed that the tents and the hammocks and some of the things probably weren't right. Some of the times I was down there, I'd ask, "Hey, can you guys please take care of the garbage?" Only to be told, "It's not my garbage." So those are the type of things, we're certainly hoping that the people that are involved in that activity, as long as it's still going to be allowed there, try to coexist the best we can and police yourselves the best you can. Feel comfortable to tell the fellow gamers, "Hey, you know, if you wreck that tent, you're going to get in trouble." Or, "Hey, please pick up after yourself." If you can do that, then it's not up to somebody else and once it's up to somebody else, then you're going to have issues, you know, arguments. Let's not make it an argument. By the way, thank you.
I was down there yesterday and had a chance to talk to a number of people and there were a couple of veterans sitting on the bench down there and they were very much in sympathy with the gamers, just saying. But a couple of people said or asked me if it was ever considered to have a donation box down there, that they, I wondered, I just wondered if the association's ever considered that. Because they said, you know, they would like to leave donations.
No, we've never considered it. We've had the Legion and the VFW both get a lot of requests. People come in, "Who do we donate to?" And they'll leave money right there, so maybe not a bad idea to have something in the gazebo that says that if you see City Hall or here or here.
Al?
Just, you know, to Councilman Craig's comment, I've had comments from other folks, people that are playing the game who have self-policed themselves and actually have picked up after other people, so thank you for doing that as well.
And we're nearing the end of this discussion, I think, and I'd like to also say that I think this is in many ways a healthy discussion to have, to talk about Veterans Park and its history and its importance to the community and, you know, how people view the park and how they feel that the park should be used and how it should be a place of respect and quiet reflection. And I think a lot of people weren't aware of this park, but are now aware of it. And I think that, you know, this isn't necessarily an unhealthy thing to have had this conversation. I know it's not an easy one for a lot of people, but I think in the end, it's been a, it's been a positive. George?
Mayor, I'd just like to say that I've had many emails from everyone and I've had many phone messages today, which I was unable to return, but I did listen to your message. Because of my work schedule and our early meeting schedule, I was not able to respond to those, but I did listen to, but I did listen to them. I just, I'd just like to say on closing on my behalf, that we are blessed with a wonderful park system here in Winona. They are open and free and everyone can enjoy them. Only one is designated as a memorial park. The Veterans Memorial is a memorial to our veterans who have served, are now serving and those that will serve in the future. It's a quiet place to contemplate and remember and thank the people you may have known, you do know, or you wish you had a chance to know. A memorial is where you go to show respect and reflect on the era in your life, perhaps where one of these conflicts may have taken place. I am not a veteran. My stepson is, his father is, his grandfather is, his uncle is and his, some of his cousins are. I respect all veterans. You guys put a lot on the line, men and women put a lot on the line and the least we can do is show our respect where they can be remembered. Thank you.
Thank you. And I guess we're ready to vote? So we will. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries unanimously.
And on to the next item. Item 5.6 is a Sobieski Park Pavilion Professional Services Contract. Second there. I was waiting for George.
I'll wait for you, George.
Yeah.
Whatever.
I'm trying to find it. I'm looking for pages there.
It's in the Easton, George. I haven't recognized anybody yet. Do you want to see that?
I got it.
Hurry up, I'm going to give it to Paul there.
All right. Anyway, give Paul the motion.
All right. Motion by Paul and seconded by Pam to approve this professional services contract for a pavilion at Sobieski Park to Owen Warnicki and Associates for $22,400 from the facility fund. Discussion? Al?
It's up to $22,400, I think, on the contract. I mean, it doesn't say it in the agenda item, but if you read the contract, that's the limit, that's the upper limit of the contract.
Other items? George?
Then there was an earlier drawing done, which cost, I believe, around $10,000 or $12,000, which the fourth ward neighborhood watch group was able to pay for, so.
Do you see the design changing much from that original?
Well, from my understanding now, of course, Chad can explain that, I guess.
Mayor and council, I'll certainly let George step in if I misspeak. There have been a couple iterations to the design, nothing what we would call substantial of what you saw in the pre-council informational meeting. It is an enclosed pavilion with part of the pavilion being outside as a shelter, so kind of what we call a half-half mixed use where some indoor, some outdoor. I know that the group is interested in using and recognizing the history of the Gabbert Park as well and the pavilion, but from the last informational meeting, there have not been what we call significant changes to the context or the concept of this pavilion.
Thank you. Other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Same sign?
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
Well, let's remember where we started last time, so we'll start with Pam.
I have nothing tonight.
We'll go to Paul.
I have a written statement to say that I am a veteran in the Navy and I would just want that inserted in the record.
Okay. All right. What do you think else?
George?
When we resurface the street, I see Keith is not here, I don't see him here anyway, the manhole covers, you know, they're leveled with the road or resurface it, then they're sitting down five, six, seven inches. Is that the city's responsibility to raise that manhole cover up?
Yes.
Okay, so that's not into the contract of the paper.
Oh, I'm sorry. We make sure it gets done. Usually, the contractor has to be the one to perform it. They put the rings in in order to lift it back up, but we don't like to do that until the road's being driven on for a little while. That way, it settles out.
Okay, thank you. I meant to say person hole cover.
Is that it, George?
That is it.
Okay. Michelle?
I have nothing, thank you.
Kerry?
Nothing.
Al? Just want to thank everybody for showing up. I'm glad you are interested in local politics. This is, this is the grassroots, this is where it starts, so thank you. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
And under the consent agenda, there are four items. The approval of the minutes from July 18th, the final adoption of an ordinance for handicap parking on Sandmore Street, the final adoption of an ordinance to opt out of the temporary family healthcare dwelling unit statute, and a claim against the city by Jesse Latendre.
Move to approve the consent agenda? Second. Motion by Al, seconded by Jerry. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Same sign? Kerry?
Move, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Michelle. All those in favor, say aye. Return. Okay. All right.